Good evening, welcome to Village of Waukesha. Tonight is Friday, July 17th, 2020. We're starting a special board meeting here at 6:30 PM. Would you all please rise and join me in pledging allegiance? Roll call, please, Kathy?
Chairman Fisher?
Here.
Supervisor Kalinsky?
Here.
Supervisor Jerome?
Yes.
Supervisor Stigley? Oh, trustee? Trustee Stigley?
Here.
Trustee Jer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is open meeting law compliance check. The statement is the agenda was posted on the three village public notice boards, the village website, and distributed to all news media requesting notification in accordance with the open meeting laws on or before Tuesday, July 15, 2020. Kathy, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item five, communications with village residents. I don't have anything other than... Part of the reason for tonight's meeting is we received notification from Deputy Clerk Treasurer Mary Elsner that she will be leaving on her about the 13th of August, and we received similar notification from Court Treasurer Kathy Nicholas that she will also be leaving the village of Waukesha. Any other communications from anybody or village residents? Okay, then we'll proceed to item six, citizens' comments. Anybody who would like to come forward, please come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and proceed.
No, no.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chad Mandetti. I'm at S35W27650, Country Court of Court in the village of Waukesha. I have a hard time making adjustments too, so I kind of get that after all these years. I am here to bring visibility to a particular issue I had in front of the now village, previously the town, in regards to a documentation I submitted to the town for a violation. I submitted that document almost a year ago, in fact, the one-year anniversary would be August 10th. So it just made us take in that long, although there has been quite a bit of conversation as of late, it's taken quite a while to get to this point. In particular, I have a neighbor that has a large dead and dangerous tree that overhangs my property. The limbs are looming over my property, and they're so big that I won't even go underneath there anymore because I'm afraid they could injure or kill me if they broke. It appears the tree is to be an ash tree, and it appears it was killed perhaps by the boar. I can see all the little holes in it. It's clearly on the other person's property. I have photos and documentation of the property lines, also coming from Waukesha County, over the website, et cetera. In particular, there are two ordinances which I'm asking the town to enforce. One in particular is Section 14-27, abatement of tree disease nuisances. It talks about Dutchella and other tree diseases as a public nuisance. Further, public nuisance means number six, any tree or park thereof which by reason of its condition or location is hazardous or dangerous to persons and property using or upon any public street, sidewalk, alley park, or other public or private place, including the terrace between curb and lot line. I think that qualifies for my property. I can enjoy the use of that property. I have not been able to enjoy the use of my property in there for quite some time. There is a second ordinance, Article II, trees, Section 14-23, stating the policy of applicability of article. Section B, application, the provisions article shall supply trees and shrubs growing or hereafter planted on public areas or terraces, and also to trees and shrubs growing or be planted on any private premises which shall threaten the life, health, safety, or welfare of the public. If you come over and take a look, you'll see it definitely is threatening, and I think I'm a member of the public. So what I'm asking for, to bring visibility to this village board, is that what it's called? Okay, sorry. To this village board is to enforce the ordinance, or well, review the ordinance, enforce the ordinance that's written, and issue notice to the homeowner to abate the problem on my yard, so I'm not afraid to walk under there or mow under there. That's what I'm asking you to do. I think a year is enough time to wait, and I've been really patient, but it's about all the patience I have.
Thank you, and I think I indicated in last conversation, this is on the agenda for this coming Thursday, so we'll be picking it up in terms of a global perspective at that time. So I hope you could join us then, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks. Take care.
Ours and comments?
Sandy Ham, West 230, South 3827, Milky Way Road, in the village. I'd like to acknowledge that in 2014, when Town Clerk Jamie Salentine left, our Clerk Treasurer Kathy Nicholas came on board in our time of need, and has seen us through the past six years, including the incorporation. We should all be thankful for her efforts. I'd like to offer my congratulations, Sir Kathy, on her new position as administrator at the Town of Lisbon. That said, as we look forward for the next few months and the November election, it is paramount that this body, with due diligence, acts swiftly to hire the necessary staff. I don't know whether you will vote to go into closed session or not, but open or closed, I hope you can set the path tonight toward the goal of a smooth transition and continuity. If you do go into closed session, I hope when you come back into open session, you share what actions you've taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we're done with citizens' comments. Item seven is announce closed session. You were notified that the village board of the village of Waukesha will convene and may upon motion to be made and seconded and acted upon by roll call vote as required under Wisconsin Stats 19.851G. Going to closed session during the course of the meeting, village board members may attend the closed session. The purpose of the closed session will be as follows. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss clerk treasurer staff, I would indicate to you, and I handed out some paperwork that I sent out, an email communication to Kathy, and included Attorney Macy back on Tuesday of this week, indicating that I didn't think that this was appropriate for a closed session. I maintain that position. I think Attorney Macy may have some thoughts on that, if you would like to share them with us.
Yes, when I read the agenda finally today, I called the chairman, just the president, to indicate that the example we always give is that you can go into closed session to talk about the music teacher, you can't go into the closed session to talk about the music department. Okay? So you've got to get that distinction. And the way it's worded, it's a little ambiguous, and I don't think that's deliberate, it's just because you can go on and talk about the individuals who are staffing the clerk's office and potentially replacing them, but if you're going to talk about reorganizing the office, or how you're going to want to organize it, that has to be done in public. So you understand the distinction? So when we say staff on the agenda, you could argue, well, that's the existing staff, or it could be argued, you know, when he says clerk treasurer office staff. But if no one sees the... The other thing we always point out, Mr. President, as you know, if no one sees a need to go into closed session, you shouldn't go into closed session. And I think the president doesn't want to speak for him, but he may think it's premature at this point, because this is the preliminary meeting, correct?
Correct. So we'll thank you. We'll follow the agenda then in 78. Is, all that said, is there a motion to go into closed session? Ask one more time, is there a motion to go into closed session? Okay, if there is none, then we'll skip on down to 7D, which is open session, and we can proceed from there. I know Kathy, you wanted on the agenda, you want to take it away?
Right. We have, with the deputy clerk's position open, I'd like the board to consider making that position a full-time position. The workload does, would be a full-time amount of work. We spoke before, the last couple of years, as the clerk treasurer was having trouble getting my vacations taken, and this would help with being able to get more work off of the clerk treasurer's desk and onto the deputy clerk's desk. If you remember, any of you that were here when you decided to increase the DPWs, part-time person, to a full-time person, one of the arguments was there was enough work. The second one was Jer, our director, could not take his vacation, and year after year we were rolling over vacations. So I come to you with the same questions. If we... I'd let, and the reason I wanted to get together quickly is because we have an election in November. I'd like to get something out, if you would like me to get something out, that's up to you, to add out for a clerk, a deputy clerk treasurer, and I'd like to say that it's a full-time position. And I would also need from you what your range is that you would like to pay a full-time person. So that's kind of the discussion I wanted to go with. I wanted to start with getting an add out as quickly as possible, and that's what brought us here today.
What's the hours currently on that position?
She works, she works three eight-hour days. So it would be to increase it to four, you know, to five days a week.
Do we have, do we have written job descriptions for the clerk treasurer and the deputy clerk treasurer, or are we simply relying on what's in our ordinance, or are there written job descriptions?
There, I couldn't tell you what's in your employee handbook. It hasn't been changed since I've been...
And I, a personal thought is, if we're going to be putting out, I'm assuming, I guess I'll ask this, that we need to do this formally in terms of advertising, if you will, for both positions, and I think we need clear written job descriptions for each one, and salary ranges, we can certainly talk about hours of work or whatnot, but I think that's got to be reduced to writing, and those should probably even be put on the website, distributed to people who want them. Anybody disagree?
So when we hired deputy clerks in the past, have we not had some kind of job description that we published?
No, because both of them, they were deputy clerks in the past, or clerks in the past.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you what you did before.
Well, we've got somebody on board now, I mean, Mary was here. Well, I guess I'm looking at from the standpoint, what was she getting, and we have to have a starting point, I mean, if we're going to do this.
So hourly, Mary makes $20 an hour, like the deputy, one deputy clerk treasurer makes $20 an hour, another deputy clerk treasurer makes $22 an hour, and that person works two days a week and does treasurer work, really doesn't do any further.
Are you talking about Jerome's position?
Correct.
Okay, does anybody, I guess back up this way, maybe Kathy, you mentioned this before, maybe Attorney Macy, we need to, these job positions or job openings need to be posted, they need to be advertised, they need to be in public. Is there any doubt about that, or any disagreement about that? From anybody?
I have no disagreement with that at all.
Your question is whether the law requires that, or your question is to whether that's what the board wants to do?
Well, let's answer both ways. Does the law require that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
You can just reach out to somebody and hire them if you're reminded to do so. You followed, in my short tenure here, you followed both procedures. You attempted, you put out a request for people to apply originally. My recollection, and Mr. Chairman, you were more involved than Mr. President than I, we hired somebody, you hired somebody, and she never showed up, and we were in a real bind, and so instead of going that route again, there was just a direct reach to Kathy to see if she would be interested in the job.
Sure.
So we went through the process, we put an ad, assume an ad in, gave some description, as Kathy's asking. We had, I think you interviewed, I wasn't participating in the interview process, but you must have interviewed and hired her, and then the day came to come to work, and apparently she took another job. I never heard the interview.
That's true, we're short-lived, one or the other, but yeah, we interviewed, went through a formal process, we looked at a number of candidates, the entire board did the interviewing, yeah, largely menthol, as you described.
And so then you were sort of in alert, you were defined, and so you reached out.
Right.
So if somebody knew somebody they wanted to reach out to, I'm just saying, the law, unless you have an internal ordinance or an internal policy, hiring policy, the law doesn't require, it's a professional services, and you establish the procedure, and I think that's the purpose of the meeting.
Okay, so the law doesn't require it?
So the other thing with my position, you might want to consider getting a interim clerk treasurer, so I can get that person up to snuff.
Getting a what?
An interim?
Right. So then you still have the ability to go through the whole process, find the one that works for the village, but at the same time, so you're not rushed, an interim would be able to fulfill the duties in the interim.
I think that would be a prudent thing to do. I mean, the other thing that's hanging out there, we were talking about this charter ordinance, and that's, I think, on for possible discussion next week, but I mean, we've got to, I think, cross the bridge about election versus appointment, and then about whether we're talking about combined positions or whether or not, we haven't had an opportunity to chat about that yet. I mean, would Kathy outmind? I would support looking to see if we could get some person or persons to fill the interim positions, and I would personally subscribe to doing this the right way. I think we need to have job descriptions that we discuss and agree to, so there's no question, so there's clarity about that. I think there need to be pay ranges. I think we need to decide, put out there, whether we need somebody full-time in that second position. I think we need to discuss all those things. I think that should be on the agenda for next Thursday night. I think we should, other folks jump in, but I think we should even then identify how long of a period of time we would have the solicitation out. I think we need a really well-mapped-out strategy on that. I think then we need to even map it out as far and as long as how we basically take in short list for candidacies, whether the entirety of the board wants to be involved in that, whether you don't for the first part of it, whether you want to be involved in interviews. I mean, I think we need to have a process laid out to do it right. Other folks weigh in, that's my point of view. I like the idea of interim help if we need it, so we get it done right.
What's the process in getting interim help? I mean, how do you find those people? You mentioned it, and AKA, when I were talking, and you said that there's retired clerks out there that are running there.
If the board would like, I would be happy to reach out to the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks' Association, and they have contacts with retired clerks or clerks that are in between positions at this time, and see if they have anything available.
I don't think I did, but a starting point, as far as I'm concerned, I guess it starts somewhere, and if that's available.
Educate me just a bit, a village clerk, how do you separate that from the village treasurer, has to have what kind of qualifications? Let's start with a village clerk.
For an interim clerk treasurer?
No, not, well, I guess answer it both ways. You go on, interim, my question was more directed to a full-time village clerk has to have what qualifications? What are the minimum qualifications?
I think you, that's up to you, what your qualifications are going to be. My thoughts on the interim clerk was that you'd want to bring a clerk in that has experience, past experience, because we have an election in November, and I didn't want to leave you without a clerk coming in right away, so this would be the first step, is to find a clerk that has, understands elections, that I can show them how we do badge of books, because chances are they haven't done those, run those before, and, but when it comes to your job description and pay raise, and what you want to do with the position, that's up to you.
So you're saying there's no state qualifications, right, with the law?
No requirement.
Okay.
I think there's, no requirement, that I know.
I mean, if we're looking to full, fill an interim position, in addition, I mean, that's a great resource for the Wisconsin, what is it, Court Association, Municipal Clerks' Association? I mean, I'm assuming we would put that on our own website immediately as well, and have it in a very prominent place?
If you want.
I think so.
I mean, I would think even for the interim thing, I would think we would want to make that as visible as possible. I think we put it on the glass at the front door, put it on the website, go to the Clerks' Association. And I would, I would think you could, I mean, I guess we're thinking that, we want to give Kathy the authorization to proceed with that, but I do think we need to have job descriptions for these permanent positions. Anybody disagree with that?
No, we should, should have job descriptions for them all.
Aye.
Also, if the part-time could also be, start out as part-time, and possibly be moved to full-time.
For next Thursday, could you get at least drafts of job descriptions together, Kathy?
I can.
Since you're a pleasure of the board, do you want her to put the solicitation out for interim staffing of those positions before next Thursday? Or wait and further discuss it at that point in time? What's your pleasure?
First, I think we should do it now, get it out for the interim positions, and get it going. You've got to wait until next other week again, it's time to get...
So get going on the...
Pushing towards the elections and stuff, I think we...
Get going on the interim position?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'd agree with that.
Kathy, what's the actual prospect of actually getting interim clerk through the Clerk Association?
I know they've, just recently, they had two that, one that now is in West Dallas and one that's in Lisbon. I don't know if, I haven't reached out because I wanted to wait until I was directed to do so, to see if they had additionals, but we have some retirees that come out, and one was recently in the Town of Lisbon and went back into retirement. That might be a possibility, he might be able to come out again. We'll see.
Question, I go to you with this one, Attorney Macy, if it's the, kind of the will of the group here to get solicitation out sooner rather than later, and maybe that's a little cryptic and doesn't have full job description, or maybe even pay range or whatever, but if we want to get going on that, let's assume for a minute even, we get that out early, might even get response by next week, can we, is it appropriate not to go into closed session to discuss the potential hiring of any candidates that might respond? Is that fair for closed session or not?
Yes, individuals can go, you can go into closed session to discuss individuals, yes.
So would anybody object if the agenda were noticed that way, and if we don't have anything to talk about, we don't have to do that, but at least that option would be before us? Does that make sense?
Yeah, if we don't use it, we don't use it, so it can't hurt.
Anybody disagree with that?
I agree with that.
You think you could get something on the street by Monday or Tuesday?
I can make the phone call, see, I can make the phone call, absolutely.
Okay, but I mean, we want something posted on the website and so forth as well, right?
Right. Now, when you're looking for me to post something on the website, you're looking for me to, we're looking for former clerks, or former clerk treasurers from Wisconsin, correct? So they know how to run this election, because they're not going to have enough time to get trained on running an election before the November election. We need somebody that's kept up on election law.
I guess I agree with that. Isn't that, yeah?
They're only interim, so you're going to...
Agreed, yeah.
I mean, not knowing how long their interim, I think that's the safer bet. I mean, if it was interim person, and we got a permanent person in place by Labor Day, that's one thing, but I mean, we might have somebody in interim position for the rest of the year, so I think that makes some sense.
Good, then yes, I can get something out on the website that will put a call out to municipal clerk and former municipal clerks, or former municipal clerk treasurers. I can get a call into the WMCA director and see if she has any names of possible interns, and then I can do a blast, have a blast put on our clerk's website as well, just in case any of the 1849 municipal clerks know someone that might want to do that, or just retired. There, in the last two months, we've had three or four retirements, so.
Kathy, is your experience such that they will ask you immediately what the pay raise range is, or will they make a demand, and you'll be bringing that back Thursday, that the same, so-and-so will do it for X amount, which is, is it chicken or the egg? And do you have a sense of what the...
I don't know. If you have an idea, I'm sure they're going to ask. You're going to entice somebody out of retirement, we won't be paying them $10 an hour and giving them the egg. But it's your decision on what you want to say, or if you want to say that they would rather look at your resume and then negotiate what you'd rather.
I guess for the interim thing, I would either be looking at a wide range, or I would say it's commensurate with qualifications, but open a suggestion on that. What does anybody else think? I guess, let me ask it another way. I'm assuming if it's an interim person, and we don't know what interim means at this point in time, I'm assuming we'd be talking about hourly-based pay rather than any kind of a salary or that type of thing. Is that what you're thinking?
That's right. And I've, I've heard interim pay between $30 and $42 an hour.
And I'd be okay with something like that?
I would defer to that opinion. I believe what Kathy's saying, if we're trying to entice somebody out of retirement, somebody with actual experience, we're, we're not going to be, I don't think that just an open-ended ad saying pay commensurate to experience is going to be enticing enough to grab somebody's attention. That could be minimum wage for all, you know? So I would go with the $30 to $42 if that is what Kathy's experience would indicate, and if that's agreeable to everyone else.
Works for me. What does anybody else think?
Works for me, too.
Mike?
Sure. I'll be in more.
Okay.
So the responsibilities of a town clerk and a town treasurer, because that's still what our ordinance references, are covered under Wisconsin Stats 60.33 and 60.34. I'm looking at them now, and quite frankly, they're...
Is that town? Is that town, is that town still, Mike?
Stat.
Yes.
You gotta go to village partners, is it the same?
That's what our ordinance references, so that's where I went. So I imagine they're very, very similar. And it's comprehensive, it's nicely comprehensive. Clerk of the meetings, clerk of the town board, serves as clerk, attends meetings, file all accounts approved by the town board, or allowed at town meetings, file the town board claims approved by the clerk, finance book, elections, appointments, notices, published posts, records, licenses, permits, schools don't apply in our case. And then it goes, then sixty dot three-four is the duties of the town treasurer.
Yes, question I would have, yeah, go to Attorney Macy, with this, I know we're looking at charter ordinance and all that kind of stuff, this has got a role on the street. Before that, do we put up all of that verbiage that comes out of chapter sixty for towns or do we try to do just an ordinance change to that part of it for the clerk and treasurer and bring in chapter sixty-one or where do we go?
We bring in chapter sixty-one.
So that needs to be on the agenda then, maybe for next week at least that part of it? Do we need, do we need to formally act on that to change the ordinance?
No, I think you're a village and then the village statutes will apply. The ordinance is in place, the trustee's correct, but any village clerk treasurer has to follow the village clerk.
So we got that Kathy, then the job description flows from that and we can certainly, we cannot do anything that is in conflict with that or anything less than that, but we can do other reasonable things as well, is that fair?
Yes.
So, start with that as a foundation. If there are other things that you think need to be added to that, that you know that you routinely do or what or not, I mean, maybe when you put the document together, let us see for sure what is driven by chapter sixty-one of state statute and then put any other suggestions or things to consider in addition to it.
Sixty-one dot two-five is the village clerk responsibilities and sixty-one dot two-six is treasurer's.
Right.
From the point of view of job responsibilities and job description, it would certainly be the place that I would start.
Exactly. Let's just, I guess, go then a step further. The deputy clerk or the deputy treasurer, Mike, maybe you're looking at that, basically their job descriptions would be much the same in the absence.
The deputy village treasurer, subject to approval of the majority of all members of the village board, may in writing, filed in the office of the clerk, appoint a deputy who shall, under the treasurer's direction and whom during the temporary absence or disability of the treasurer or during the vacancy in such office shall perform the duties of treasurer. The deputy treasurer, the deputy shall receive such compensation as the village board shall determine. The acts of such deputy shall be covered by official bond as the village board shall direct.
I guess one other question Kathy, you might have some sense about this, do, so we're looking, we're looking at the possibility of, well, we're looking at a clerk and a treasurer or clerk treasurer, right? As a place to start? And then the question that I have got is if we're looking for some other help, I mean, at this point in time, Joan, is she a deputy treasurer? Is that her title?
Right.
Okay, so she's deputy treasurer. If we're looking for some other interim help, does that person necessarily have to have the deputy clerk treasurer or clerk or clerk treasurer conferred upon them or not? I mean, can we just have somebody who would be office help or what qualifications for an interim person does that person need to have?
I think your interim clerk treasurer might give you a better idea of what she would...
So, is that maybe the place to start, is to try to get an interim clerk and an interim treasurer or an interim clerk treasurer in place before we even go to additional help? Is that what you're saying?
I'm thinking so, because when you're, when you actually hire your clerk treasurer, you'd like your clerk treasurer or clerk and treasurer to be able to hire their deputies, which is what is set to, instead of you hiring a deputy or deputy clerk treasurer and then they would not be able to hire the...
I, I get that, the only thing I would say is I'm not sure how that shoe fits for an interim person. I guess, put it another way, if seeking and finding and connecting with someone to be the interim clerk, an interim treasurer or an interim clerk treasurer, can we get along without additional help until such a person or people are in place?
No, definitely not for a November election. We would normally have other people in the office working on the election with us, normally. So no, you need to have additional people in there. I'm just saying that you may not want to give the title of deputy clerk treasurer to somebody and make it a...
I mean, can those be, I know they're in the office at the time, can those be pool workers or something? Who, who is or are the other person we need? I mean, we're down, we're down twenty-four hours a week as of the thirteenth of August, is that right? With Mary leaving?
Correct. Correct. Well, and during elections, I have her working full-time, so.
And just to be clear, Joan's title is deputy clerk treasurer?
Yes, her title is deputy clerk treasurer, but she does...
I thought I heard somebody say that it was deputy treasurer, I just wanted to...
Well, that's what I asked, you said yes, deputy treasurer.
That's what she does, her work is all deputy treasurer work.
So her title is deputy clerk treasurer?
That's correct.
That's why I wanted to call attention to.
We may want to take a look at that though, because I mean, I talked to her, she wants absolutely nothing to do with the clerk's position, elections or anything, so at least my discussion with her, I think she'd be much more comfortable to be deputy treasurer. She wants nothing to do with the clerk's responsibility whatsoever. Okay, summary, where are we at? You're gonna get out a solicitation immediately for an interim clerk and an interim treasurer or an interim clerk treasurer, right?
Correct.
Okay, and you're gonna get job descriptions together following chapter sixty-one for a clerk, municipal village clerk, municipal village treasurer and whatever, any other things that we think need to be added to that job description that might be unique to us here and have that on the agenda for discussion on Thursday night? And we're gonna notice a closed session, the possibility of talking about candidacies of people who might respond by that time. Is that kind of a summary of where we're at?
It's a great summary, but can the board spend five more minutes trying to give guidance as to whether they envision elected or appointed? Because if you wake this up, if it's elected, the job description sort of goes by the wayside, in all due respect, you know? Who elect, if they're elected, they're elected, but if the sense of the body tonight, and no decision, but I think maybe on Thursday and we'll just have to work on the charter ordinance, that's gonna be one of the first decisions. If you're thinking that it's going to be appointed versus elected, Kathy probably needs to know that to write it out. And if you're thinking combined, that should be known too, because you directed that they'd be written separate and that's fine, but if you're, if you have a sense of the body and no commitment tonight of how you envision it starting next April, you should, it would be helpful to know.
I mean, I'll, I'll jump into the, go ahead.
My, my sense with no commitment, avoid any commitment, is for them to be combined and then appointed.
I would, I would compare with that. I'm on board with the appointed part for sure. If they're elected, they have to be from the village of Waukesha, right? That limits the pool. I'm all about appointed, I'm probably on board with the combined position. I certainly don't see the need for a full-time clerk in a full-time position or treasurer, rather. I mean, the only thing that I would allow for is if we were to find two people who are basically, somebody who's simply adamant, they wanted to do treasurer's work and not clerk's work and vice versa, could I see that as a possibility? I mean, as a practical reality, aren't most municipal governments, John, you might know this better than anybody or Kathy, I mean, I gotta think an awful lot of these have gone to appointed positions, have they not? And a lot of them are combined, I mean, I think, I think we're kind of going against the flow if we go another way.
All right, so job descriptions of combined, appointed clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer for Thursday's meeting.
Everybody good with that?
The interim will have thirty to forty-two dollar range on hourly range. And is the idea to get you through the November election or is it the idea to carry on until a clerk treasurer is chosen?
I don't think we know that at this point in time.
But you can give direction of whether you have a vision of getting that person in sooner than later. I mean, if you're gonna, and I'm not saying rush it, that's a terrible way to look at it, but if your vision is to try to get your full-time appointed clerk treasurer in here sooner than later, that's a different message to your interim than saying, we envision getting your replacement here January first, just to throw it to them.
Sure.
And so I think you share with where you're at. If you'd like to get it done quickly, that's, if possible, that's the direction Kathy would tell people, the interim, they're gonna say, do you expect us to be here through the November election or not? And if you say yes, then the ads would go out and obviously if you found the perfect candidate, you could, the interim person understands that, but I, does that make sense? You sort of gotta give your...
Sure, it does. I guess, the only comment that I would make about that, and I mean, that's a good point, I mean, it all depends upon the qualifications of the person. I, I guess my thought would be I'd certainly like to allow for the fact that this interim person and maybe communicate that message might be here through the November election because if we get somebody who decides to pull the pin in, you know, the beginning or middle of October or something, I mean, we're up the creek. And the other thing we gotta do too, I mean, is if, it's not just about the elections, I mean, we have budgets to put together, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff to do. We focus everything on the elections, those are important, but we've got budgets to put together, I mean, we've got some incredibly important work to do. So I guess from my thought, I would, I guess certainly allow for the possibility that interim position could go through the November election and possibly through the end of the year, the possibility. I mean, if somebody were to come along and say, you know, I can, I can give you six weeks for sure, I mean, we might be having the same discussion in September, October, that might be worse. What's anybody else think? I don't want to dominate discussion, but...
I think that that's absolutely correct, because if we get somebody in here, we're, I don't want to open ourselves up to the possibility that sometime in October, we're gonna have a brand-new clerk treasurer. And then our interim is gonna be going out the door and then we're gonna have somebody new who's completely unfamiliar or with the nuances of whatever we do here. So I would suggest that we put out an ad with the stipulation that they're gonna be here through the November election.
I think I do that end of the year, just knocking on the door.
With the understanding that if they're qualified person and, you know, you know? But they need to know what the maximum is, that your goal is to have someone in place by January first, if possible before that.
Sure.
But that's the direction they're gonna ask, they're gonna say, you're gonna need me for November or not? You're gonna need me to do the budget or not? The vision is yes.
Well, the November election's a big deal, I mean, so, I mean, that will, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's probably the biggest fish in the lake for interim clerk treasurer.
Yes, absolutely.
That's big, the other thing though, that we gotta think about, and again, good for you, you're moving on, I mean, this couldn't come at a more untimely moment, such are the circumstances for the village here, I mean, that begs the question, charter ordinance, it begs a question about capital and operating, budgets and so forth, it begs a question a little bit about how much work you got to accomplish and how you're behind on minutes and that type of thing if you're busy with the election. The question then kind of comes is, do you get involved in some of that or not? Or can we, can we wait to start some of that type of stuff until we get an interim person in place? Because otherwise it may be kind of missing or lost motion. And that's the practical reality of where we're at.
Just so you're aware, what I have on my desk right now, I, what I hope to finish before the thirty days is to get you through the election, train anyone that you put in that office, get, complete all minutes, finalize all the board review paperwork and get that all filed away, and then work with our attorney on the lawsuit, make sure that we have all our paperworks ready and I think that's going to be my thirty days. I don't think I'm gonna have much more time to do anything else. I want to make sure I accomplish that and get that really solid for you guys before I leave. I think those are important things.
I mean, I would be happy, without taking a lot of your time, but I would be happy if you can give a little bit of time or attention to it to kind of, a little bit until we get somebody in place, take lead on the budget part of it. I mean, even if we get an interim person in here in a couple of weeks who has got incredible qualifications and stuff, there's gonna be an incredible learning curve for them in terms of budget and that type of thing. So I'd be happy to work with you to at least to try to get some of that stuff and maybe some of the board members want to help with it. We got some experience here, but an interim person is not gonna be able to view a whole lot of, I think we've been realistic about that, a whole lot of assistance to us with regard to the budgeting.
So I just need a priority then? So if you're looking at...
Kathy, can I ask a question?
Yes.
If you add somebody in very quickly, because I hear the board being very supportive to get an interim in here as quickly as possible, could they do the election freeing you up to do the budget?
Yes.
So, I mean, I just wanted to throw that out before you do the priority. It seems to me you want a reliever of the election, because you gotta get a qualified election person. I think the trustee Kalinsky has already said that for the November election. If they're qualified to do November, they're qualified to do August.
And while there's much to do with no doubt, they don't know they, it's as untimely and, or certainly in the last six months for the town of Waukesha, which became the village of Waukesha, worst times that this could have happened. It could have happened in the middle of the tip, it could have happened in the middle of the border agreements that were crafted by Kathy, it could have happened in the middle of the public hearings, it could have happened in the middle of the village incorporation that we were successful at, so there's never a good time to lose the qualifications of the person that we have in place, but I, I don't know that I agree that this is the worst time it could have happened. When I look back at what has transformed into what was town of Waukesha and now village of Waukesha, I don't see this as the worst possible time for it to have happened.
Well, perhaps I misspoke, but we need to move forward rather than looking backwards. And responsible Attorney Macy said, if we were to get someone in here fairly quickly, and I mean, that's a big, if the election is what, eleventh?
Correct.
What is that, three weeks from Tuesday?
Correct.
I mean, that is not very far away, I mean, let's be realistic about that, that's not much time. I mean, whoever that person is might be able better to pick up some of the election stuff than they would the budgeting, so I guess, I mean, stay with your priorities at this point in time. I mean, I think we gotta face the reality... at this point in time. I mean, I think we got to face the reality, it will be difficult for you to do all of it, and do all of it well, because the thirteenth is going to come around real quickly. I mean, let's be realistic about that, particularly with Mary being gone and so forth. Let's be realistic, folks.
You want to make sure you have a clerk in place that can clerk on the thirteenth, because you have a plan commission meeting on the thirteenth.
You're not going to be here for the plan commission meeting?
No, it wouldn't make any sense for me to do your plan commission meeting. I'm not the one that's going to be taking the minutes and doing the minutes afterwards.
They can, they can do, I mean, someone can do that from the YouTube or whatever, so you're saying you're not going to be here for the meeting on the thirteenth?
I will not. At four o'clock, we'll be.
So you would, you would not be here for that meeting?
I'm hoping you have somebody in place before that.
I am too, but I got to tell you, I'm disappointed, that disappoints me greatly, that you wouldn't at least stick through that plan commission meeting, even if we had an interim person here.
I can't disagree with her. I can't see a clerk creating minutes for a meeting that they weren't at.
I'm not disagreeing about the minutes.
She's not going to be here, she's not going to be here. That's that.
Trying to find solutions, Mr. Chair President, you said, you know, we want to move ahead. Eddie, do you have any poll workers, chief inspection people who could come in and run this election if you don't quickly find an interim person to relieve yourself some pressure on the election?
I, no. I have to get prepped for the election. They can run them, I, they, the chiefs run election day, but they need somebody to, if they have any problems with Badger Books, with the prep work that gets to the point where we're doing Badger Books, and, you know, getting the notices that are required and getting everything set up, that's.
I'm trying to find a solution to relieve the pressure of the August election. Can you answer the question? No.
Well, let's, let's post the positions and see what a week brings.
That's what I'm saying.
We're not going to fix it sitting here for the next two hours.
We can roll the punches when we get somebody, or we can start adjusting this workload and figure out what we can do what then, at that point, instead of trying to figure out, oh, we don't have anybody in place here, not even decided what their qualifications are. So I think we need to get somebody, and then from that point on, we start allocating jobs and things.
Let me, I agree with that. Let me just ask a real direct question to you, Kathy. You don't even have to answer now, but I would ask you if you would please think about it until we find out who we've got, what we've got in place, if you would basically be here for the plan commission meeting on the thirteenth, and if you needed to stick around and write up the minutes or what or not, I would just ask that you would consider that as a courtesy to the village of Waukesha. Okay, any other items of discussion? I don't know, I don't think we need to take any formal motion on this, do we?
No.
I don't see anything.
No.
Okay. Anything further? Then a motion for adjournment would be in order.
I move to adjourn by second.
Motion by trustee Stigler, seconded by trustee Kalinsky, to adjourn at seven twenty-two PM. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.